By the way, we were talking about the audio system. And he'd asked me to tell everybody, if everybody's listening, to please speak more directly into our microphone because for some reason it's hard for them to hear back there.
Okay.
And they don't have any way to up the volume for back there.
Okay.
Got it?
Speak directly in the microphone.
Speak as close as you can.
Or pretend you're gonna kiss it.
Yeah, just don't breathe heavy into it.
All right, don't breathe in your mouth.
Don't breathe heavy into it.
We're ready for that before.
I defended your honor. Now I shouldn't have.
Speak in.
I just be quiet. Say nothing.
No, don't dare do that. Denise, are you ready? Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And I understand that our signal is a bit weak in the back of the room. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna try to speak as close as we can to the microphone so it's audible for everyone. So we'll get the meeting started by standing for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, and welcome to everyone who attended today. Could we start by having the roll call, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Don Anderson.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberto Sais.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Richard Tonello, representing Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And proof of publication, please.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on July 21st, 2021, August 4th, 2021, and August 25th, 2021, or by affidavit of certified mailouts and postings at the site.
All right, thank you very much. I don't believe we have any minutes for approval, so we'll move on with the instructions. And I take a moment here to, for those of you who have not attended one of our meetings, just to familiarize you with the process, we're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. And for those of you who are not familiar with the procedures, we have three segments. We have continuances for any, anyone who has made an application, if they've asked for a continuance, or for, in the case the staff has asked for a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our tradition to grant those continuances unless there are extenuating circumstances that cannot be addressed. We have consent items, and those are items where we have not received any objections to an application, and it has been recommended for approval by staff. That will be on the consent agenda. We will go through the consent agenda item-by-item basis. If there's anything on consent agenda that you wish to be heard, raise your hand, and we'll pull it off consent agenda and have it for discussion with the regular items, which is the final group. Those are the items that are not being continued and not on consent. Those will be heard today in full. Applicants will have three minutes to speak. And objectors will have three minutes to ask questions. And following the presentation of objections or concerns, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond or rebut. I think we've had one request for additional time from the applicant, have we not?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. That's for item P5.
P5, okay. I think that was for 10 minutes.
For over 10 minutes.
Okay. So, because it's a requirement that if you want extra time, you have to request it in writing at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. So for those of you who have not done so, this is a great time to silence your phones because you probably have your phones with you, and I don't know if you put them on silent or not. I better check my own. Yes. Okay. So before we start the regular meeting, we open the meeting for public comment on any items not appearing on today's agenda. Is there anybody here to speak on anything that's not on today's agenda? I don't see anyone. So with that, I think we can begin.
Do you want to swear folks in?
Yes, that's a good idea. Get that out of the way. Thank you. So for those of you who plan to give testimony today or come up and speak, if you please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth can help you, guys?
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. The first item is item PC1, that's PDD 21-2094. It's a variance request in the name of Shawna Mizell. It's for an increase in the maximum fence height along the south front property line facing Sea Ranch Drive from four feet to six feet on a corner lot in an R4 high-density residential district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Is there anyone here to object? Okay, so you would like to have that pulled from the consent agenda?
I'm sorry?
You'd like to have it pulled today so you could speak on it? Okay. We'll pull that one.
Item PC2 is PDD 21-2095. It's an alternative standard in the name of Snow Mountain Screemageddon Tree Hoppers for an alternative standard from the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 406.1, signs, to increase the maximum allowable height of one monument sign from eight feet to 12 feet, and increase the maximum square feet inside structure area from 80 square feet to 104 square feet in exchange for an overall reduction in the total signage on the property in an AC agricultural district. It comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. And I will say that on this item, Mr. Girardi has recused himself on this item.
Okay. And is there, the applicant is present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Is there anyone here to object? Any objections?
Mr. Chair, could you vote on that one separately to Mr. Girardi?
Okay. So can I hear a motion to approve PC2, please?
I'll make a motion to approve PC2.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion on item PC2 as submitted, and with Representative Girardi withholding, abstaining. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Following item is PC3. It's PDD 21-7554. This is a special exception in the name of American Homes for Rent, Bridge Haven Residential. It's for an amenity center in an R4 high-density residential district. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
And the applicant's present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Anyone here to object?
I have some questions.
Pardon me?
I have some questions.
All right, we'll have to pull that one.
Move on to item PC4.
Yep.
And that's PDD 21-7559 in the name of Davron LLC, 8429 Land O' Lakes Boulevard. It's for a special exception for a professional services office in an R1 rural-density residential district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right. Is the applicant present? Hear the applicant? Okay. Anyone here to object? See no objections?
Mr. Chair, I just have one quick question. I think it can stay on the consent, but is if the special exception's granted, is it granted just for this particular use, or does it run with the property?
It grants it for this particular use. That will run with the property.
Okay.
Unless it's conditioned, we have in the past approved some special exceptions that are limited to that particular individual, but otherwise it runs with the land.
Yeah, this particular one does not have a condition that states it doesn't run with the land. We didn't think it was appropriate because it is in a, you know, retail office residential area. It's a commercial corridor on 41.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That concludes your consent agenda.
All right. And I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask real quick, do we have anybody on WebEx for any of the consent items that is not an applicant?
We do not have anyone on WebEx for any of the consent items that is not an applicant. We do have someone for PC5, but thank you for mentioning that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
A motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we're gonna hear PC1 and PC3 then.
So let me share my PowerPoint for PC1.
Okay.
This is for Shawna Mizell. This is for a variance to increase the maximum fence height along the south front property line facing Sea Ranch Drive from four feet to six feet on a corner lot in an R4 district. The property is located in northwest Pasco County, and it's on the northeast corner of the intersection of Melanie Avenue and Sea Ranch Drive. It's approximately 450 feet or so west of Old Dixie Highway and a little bit over 500 feet from 19. As stated, the increase, it's for an increase in the maximum fence height from four feet to six feet along Sea Ranch Drive. This is a site plan, just basically showing the fence area as it exists today. It's a vinyl fence. Here are some photographs of the fence along Sea Ranch Drive. The current location contains a single-family dwelling on a corner waterfront lot. There is a previously existing non-conforming six-foot-tall fence on the property that was removed. The fence was replaced with a six-foot-tall vinyl fence. The Land Development Code 1203.2 basically states that if 50% or more of the structure value was damaged, it cannot be restored except in conformity with the regulations in the zoning district, which require four-foot fence. There was a Pasco County notice of violation for the fence, and a final hearing has been continued to a future date pending the outcome of this variance. The Traffic Operations Division has provided that the six-foot-tall vinyl fence does not obstruct traffic or visibility at the intersection of Sea Ranch Drive and Melanie Avenue. And staff finds that the applicant's hardship is a result of site conditions that are not self-imposed. And the staff recommends approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet. And I'm here for any questions you may have.
Okay. So is the applicant virtually present?
Ms. Mizell is virtually present.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Would the applicant like to make their presentation, or would like to wait until we hear what the concerns are?
Oh, I could wait for what the concerns are, but given the location of the property, it speaks for itself because adjacent, there are woods there where the homeless people have been, uh...
Okay.
...domestic, oh, my God.
All right.
And that's why it's not a beautification issue, it was just a matter of conforming. So what was previously there to be in code, it is no obstruction of the water view based on my roof line being so long, and it's one of its kind.
Okay. Thank you then. You want to withhold further comment until we hear what the concerns are? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, well then that's what we'll do. I think, was it the lady at the back had a question? You want to come forward and please state your name and address, and let us know what your concerns are.
My name is Christine Perez. I am the adjoining neighbor to her east side at 13727 Judy Avenue. I as well had a six-foot fence in the area when I moved in and bought the home. Code enforcement came, and when I, probably six months after I put up the other side of the fence to make it match, informed me that it must be cut down to four feet, replaced or removed. At that time, verbatim, the code enforcement man told me that the county would come out and do it and charge me if I did not have it done in 21 days. Here since, I've been told by code enforcement that that's not true. However, my fence had to be cut down to four feet, and $2,000 fence, I was not very happy. If it's for safety reasons or reasons of the homeless, I believe that my property, which is the exact same property line that she's speaking of, should be included. It's the same reason, I'm a single parent, it's just being a child at home. So again, same reasons as her, I feel like it should have been up. Hers is in the front yard and the side yard, complete six-foot fence all the way around. On the other side of her fence, where she still has five feet of property, has been left unkept. It has been overgrown, it's dead branches, it's out of sight, out of mind type of deal. And I feel that she can't see it, and she's not cleaning it. I've actually had to pay her own son to mow that part of the grass. So I feel I should be included if it is allowed. I feel that it should be, each end cap of that street should be allowed at that point. It should be fair.
Sir, ma'am, are you, you're not against the variance then? You only want your own?
I'm not against, as long as I'm included.
Okay, well, you can't, this board cannot just include you in this variance request. You need to file an application for your own variance request, and then it would come back to the board.
In the same situation?
The same process that your neighbor's going through, you'd have to go through that same process.
Okay.
So you can talk to Ms. Hernandez about filing an application for your own variance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant have any comment there? Her, probably nothing to add?
Oh, nothing to add. The property has been very well maintained, as well as hers, and from Sea Ranch Drive, there is no obstruction of the water view. And that's all I could say. I could upload more pictures, you know, showing that there's no obstruction of the water view, but this is a safety issue, and this was an issue of code enforcement.
And I assume you'd have no objection to her having the same exception?
No, 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 sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, then I'd like to hear a motion.
I'm motion to approve PC1.
Second? Okay, we have a motion to approve, staff's recommendation of approval with PC1. Any further discussion on the motion?
May I make one comment? I would suggest that the lady who came up here and requested had the same treatment as what we're voting on, that perhaps she seek or somebody provide her with some assistance in going through the process. That's the only comment I would make. And it's just a comment.
Yeah, I think, and I think they certainly will. I think, David, you steered her to the right person. I'm sure Denise would be happy to make sure she gets what she needs to get that done. Good suggestion. Okay. So we have further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. I think we're PC3, are we?
Yes, that's correct. Liam Devine, Planning and Development, PC3, PDD 21-7554, in the name of American Homes for Rent/Bridge Haven Residential. It is a special exception for an amenity center in R4 high-density residential district. The subject site is located on the west side of Upphil Road, approximately 800 feet south of Chancy Road. The subject site consists of the proposed Bridge Haven residential development, consisting of 134 single-family detached homes. The applicant is requesting a special exception for an amenity center proposed on Track C5 on approximately .7 acres, or .7 of an acre portion of the development. The subject area has a future land use classification of RES6 under the comprehensive plan. The surrounding area is characterized by residential development and agricultural pursuits. Taking a look at the surrounding zoning, to the north is AR and R4. To the east is AR and R4. To the south is R4, and to the west is AR. To the northeast, south, and west is all RES6 for the future land use surrounding. And this is a look at an aerial. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So once again, is the applicant present, virtually or otherwise?
The applicant is virtually present.
All right. And would the applicant like to comment first, or hold comment until we hear what the concern is?
I will. This is Joseph Gattuso, and I will hold comment until I hear what the concern is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we had somebody in the far back somewhere? Oh, okay. You moved on me. Getting a jump on me. Okay.
Thank you.
Hello?
Well, my concern is...
Before you start, we just need your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Annette Galbraith.
Right into the microphone.
Oh, Annette Galbraith. My address is 33842 Chancy Road, Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33543.
Okay, thank you.
And were you sworn?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. My concern is when the building started being, initially started, we ended up with a lot of water in the back of our property. Since then, the builder has done an awesome job at restricting that amount of water that's setting in the backyard. My concern is the area that I noticed yesterday that they were filling with more dirt was kind of a retention pond in the back, and I'm wondering if he's going to plans to put anything over there, like a parking lot, or a pool, or that type of thing, or if there's going to be area for drainage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You can just lay that on the table there if you'd like. Wherever it's convenient. All right, we'll have the applicant, is there anybody else? I don't think there was. Okay, so we'll have the applicant respond to those concerns, please. Are you with us?
This is Bruce Wolling.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
WRA.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Okay. This is Bruce Wolling with WRA Engineering, the civil engineer for the applicant. The, there is an existing parking area just north of the amenity center that's currently being constructed. This parking area was permitted along with the subdivision plans, and so, and right behind the parking area, there is nothing additional proposed. As a matter of fact, there is a drainage swale and a drainage inlet that is designed to accept any runoff that might be impounded in the area, as the neighbor, I believe, expressed a concern with. And so, in the area's final constructed condition, and there should be positive drainage through that swale into our master stormwater system that should carry the runoff to our stormwater ponds internal to the development, which ultimately discharges at the far south end of the subdivision itself, which is farther south than the south side of the amenity center site.
All right. So what amenities are you installing there?
It's an amenity center building and an amenity center pool.
Okay.
And that's to the southeast of the neighbor's property, whereas the parking area is directly to the east.
All right. Any questions, Sonadias? Nothing? All right, well, that's good. I think that answered most of our questions, so I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve PC3.
Second? We have a motion to approve PC3, staff's recommendations. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Mr. Chair, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development, here again. So if we can, if it's okay with you, if we can move on to item P6?
Yes, let's do that.
Item P6 is PDD 21-7552. It's a zoning amendment, SR40 LLC Riverside Village Unit 5, for a change in zoning from an R2 low-density residential district to an MF1 medium-density residential district for a total of 55 townhomes with deed restriction. This particular item, after the agenda was published, the applicant requested a continuance in writing to the October 28, 2021 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 PM in Newport Richie. I know that there may be some folks here who may want to speak to the item, but I just wanted to read that into record, that there is a request for continuance on that item to October 28, 2021 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Newport Richie.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, to be clear, they do have the right to speak today, but if they do, they will not be able to speak again when the item is continued to the new date. So I just wanted to alert everybody to that, that they can speak today if they want to, but that would be your three minutes when this comes back.
Okay, so is that clear to everyone, or do you need further explanation? Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Can I ask a question on that?
No, I'm sorry, that, you'd be disqualified then.
He's joking.
I'm just kidding. Of course, come on up. Yeah. That'll lighten things up a little bit.
I went to Gulf High School, so you can't go that far.
So did I. So did I. I went there too.
Short bus together, I get it. My question on that is, if they bring up new evidence, so what we came to, prepared to speak on today's behalf, a lot of us took off work again to be here, whatever new evidence that he produces, because he didn't show up, he asked for the continuance, us as individuals who have to take off work to show up here to try to get across our points, if he brings up something new, how are we still not allowed to speak? Because he's not improving, he's not... Because he's not improving, he's not producing any information different from last time that he was supposed to, he's asked for the continuation so he can provide that.
Because you could choose to speak at the next meeting when you have that new information. You don't have to speak today, you can wait till the next meeting.
Right, but my question is, I have information that I wanted to bring up today. Now he's going to produce new information. When he produces that new information, it should allow me, as long as I'm not repeating what I said.
Then you can wait till the next meeting when you have that new information to speak. There's nothing saying you have to speak today, you're choosing to speak today.
Right, but it, and it was, we got to, when did we get notice that it was a continuance?
I realize that it was after the agenda was, was posted, which is why you technically have the right to speak today, but...
Right, but then I don't have the chance to speak next time if I can get off work. So, once again, we're holding a meeting. I brought this up last time, we're holding a meeting in the middle of the day where some people aren't afforded, and you brought up the WebEx. You can't necessarily tell your boss, hey, I've got to sit here and watch this WebEx until I have my possible turn to talk, I don't know when that's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, I get that you should have had more notice from the applicant to the continuance, and you should direct those comments to the applicant, not this board.
Or the people who are going to approve the continuance.
I mean, you could object to the continuance and ask that it be heard today. And then, but it's up to the Planning Commission to decide whether they want to continue it or not.
But, am I wrong in saying that it's anything?
Are you objecting to the continuance?
Well, I'm asking a question.
If you want to speak to why the item should not be continued, that's fine, and you can get to speak again at the next meeting. But if you're speaking to the substance of the item, you get one shot at that.
Even if he provides new information from last time?
Yes, because you could wait till the next meeting when he's gotten it.
He produced new information after I spoke last time that I wanted to talk to the validity of. Now he's going to produce new information, because what I wanted to talk to was the validity of what he said. So, that's him producing information after I got to speak. Then he's going to produce new information again on the next one, so that shouldn't change.
I understand that, but you can speak at the next meeting with whatever new information they provide. And my advice to you would be to wait, because one of the items that the Planning Commission asked for was a concept plan for this property. I don't think one's been delivered yet or shown. And so, that would be new information that you may want to wait to see before you make your comments.
That's one of the things I want to talk about. But I had to take off work again to come to do this, and we're still here.
Let me just say that a lot of us are up here, we took off work to be here too. And we do it two times every month. So, I appreciate what you're saying, but that's just the way it works. And we got to have rules and regulations, we got to follow them. It can't be chaos, it can't be, today it's this way and tomorrow it's a different way.
So it was never, but it was never posted, so on that chaos...
Well, it doesn't have to be, that's part of the rules.
Okay.
And we, we, we required it to be in writing, and we required it to be, you know, in advance, and it was. So we have to, you know, have to accept the request, we don't have to approve it. But it's been our custom to approve it.
That's the P5, correct?
Yeah.
The request for...
The remedy would be if you're upset with the continuance, Planning Commission doesn't have to approve the continuance, and they can demand that the item be heard today.
Okay.
That's your remedy.
But you're not going to get all the information, because he doesn't have the concept plan.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Marcus Coe, 9304 Nile Drive.
Gulf High grad. Go Bucks.
I want to ask if anybody else wants to...
Anybody else? Does anybody else want to speak? I see no one? Okay, so the, the motion I'm looking for is to continue this, this application until October 28, 2019, 2021, in Newport Ritchie.
I'll make a motion to continue P5 to 1028.
Six.
P6.
Excuse me, P6, sorry.
Chair, before we hear the motion, can we just confirm the applicant doesn't want to say anything?
All right, Mr. Applicant, are you prepared to say anything? Or Mrs. Applicant?
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, Florida.
You know you can't speak next time now.
34652. Wouldn't that be nice? We are, we request the continuance, we are working on the items that you requested further information on, and we look forward to being back here in the end of October. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've cleared that now, so we have a motion?
I think there's already a motion on the floor, right?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, I don't mind seconding it, but I do understand, and I am somewhat sympathetic to people that have to take off work. So, if anything can be done to try to make sure that all the questions are answered and everything's ready for this item to be heard next time, I think that would be greatly appreciated by all.
Okay, so...
Let me add, or if it can't, make sure it's noticed as a continuance.
Correct, that's true.
On the agenda. Tell us about the continuance well before, so we can put it on the agenda as a continuance.
Okay, I think that was Barbara's fault.
He didn't go to Gulf High School.
No, it's true, it's true.
I just want a clarification on the date.
October 28.
28th of October, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I think we have a motion, a second.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We do, I made the motion.
Any further discussion?
David corrected me, and Jamie seconded.
Any further discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. All right, motion carries. Okay.
Good Day Planning Commission, Jessica Kowal with the Planning and Development Department, current planning division. Item PC5 is PDD 21-7526 in the name of Darrell and Karen Renner for a requested change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to MPUD Master Planned Unit Development District to allow for 108 single-family detached units on approximately 50.15 acres. Next slide. The property is located in South Central Pasco County on the south side of Bexley Road, approximately one mile west of the intersection of US Highway 41 and Wisteria Loop. Next slide. The western parcel of the subject site reflects its original agricultural, AC Agricultural District. And on January 12 of 1977, the Board of County Commissioners approved a rezoning request from AC Agricultural District to AR1 Agricultural Residential District for Ivilinar Estates, which is the subject site's eastern parcel of this application. Here is an exhibit of the future land use as it exists today. Next slide. The subject site contains a residential dwelling unit and agricultural pursuits. The subject site is in the central market area, yet is outside of the urban service expansion areas and rural areas. Next slide. The proposed request, as conditioned, is consistent with the Pasco County's Land Development Code, Chapter 400, subsection 402.2 zoning amendment to MPUD Master Plan Unit Development with the applicable provisions of the, and the applicable provisions of the Pasco County's Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. Here is an exhibit of their proposed master plan. Next slide. And this petition comes to you with a staff recommendation of approval as stipulated by the conditions included in your packet.
Mr. Chair, can I ask her one question?
Yes.
Jessica, one question. Have you done a calculation of how many units they could get under the existing zoning? Or do you know that information?
With its existing zoning, as an AR district, it would allow for, well, it's AC and AR. I'd have to split up the data. Let's split it down the middle, we've got about 10 acres at 25, so maybe 20 with AC, and then another 25 at AR1.
So they could get 45 units total? Under the existing zoning?
Rough estimate.
Okay, if that number changes when you sit down and do your calculation, just tell me.
Will do.
They get under Res 3, which is the future land use plan, right?
Yes, but that's a different layer, obviously.
All right, is the applicant present?
Thank you, Chairman, and Board Members. Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn. We have our whole team here today, our planner, our civil engineer, our traffic engineer, and we'll be obviously prepared to answer any questions or concerns that come from the board, as well as the public. We did want to add a few more comments, I had an exhibit that I had, we had prepared, because we understand there may be some folks from the Wisteria Loop area, which is located, which is one of our access areas on this property, that are not too jazzed about us using that for access. So I kind of wanted to give the board and the public a little bit more of a layout of really what's planned long-term in that area, what developments, you know, online, what developments are coming online, and what the long-term, you know, traffic and planning vision is for that particular area. And I think it'll help with any of the concerns that come up.
Do you, let me just ask you this question, I know you asked for extra time, 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Now I want you to use up all your time explaining something that isn't a concern to the neighbors.
Okay.
Do you, do you think it would be better for them to hear what they have to say?
I'm comfortable with whatever, if you feel that's the better way to proceed on this, then I'll be happy to do that.
Just a suggestion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question for you before she does whatever she decides to do. Is the applicant in agreement with the staff conditions of approval?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
We are.
Okay, I'll proceed with whatever you were going to do.
Yeah. I can use that for, you know, if there's questions that come up, because really it's just to explain where we're at from a transportation perspective. I just want to put it on the record that we are absolutely doing everything that we can and that the code requires us to do in terms of, you know, doing the improvements to Wisteria Loop, which right now is our access. That's our way in and out to 41, so, but we're here to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I know there's some people here that have, have questions or concerns. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and address, and what your concern is, and we'll try to address those, get them addressed. A what? I'm sorry, couldn't hear him.
Projector, an Elmo.
Oh, okay.
Can we hold my time until he gets it started?
Your time's already started.
It's way too fast, clearly he's not a Gulf High grad.
That's true. Like we are.
Thank you, Commissioners, Jessica Kowal, the Planning Development Department, to answer Mr. Goldstein's question. The AR portion of the site is a little smaller than anticipated, maximum 19 dwelling units under the current zoning.
So that's...
19 total?
So 19 total, okay, thank you.
Well, how far away is he from getting here, getting it together for you? In that case, I'm going to have to get my glasses on so I can see.
I wonder if it would actually be faster if he just took a picture of it and scanned it. Well...
Just take a picture with your phone.
Yeah, they're taking a picture.
Take a picture with your phone, and then email it to Craig, he can put it up there. Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion while we're waiting, can we hear from any other members of the public while he's doing that?
Yes, that's a good idea. I've been enthralled with this exercise. Mr. Gad, would you like to come forward, please? Please, come on, come on up and speak. Give us your name and address, since nobody knows who you are.
Ray Gad, 6504 Wisteria Loop, wanted the group to know that I'm not here in my capacity as a representative of the school district, which sometimes happens. But I also have a disclosure issue. Mr. Tonello works for me, and this is a personal issue for me, not a work issue. So, the attorney may want to opine on that, but I wanted to make sure that we disclose that he does work for me. I am his boss four times removed, but nonetheless, I didn't want him to be put in an awkward spot.
We don't mind putting him in that spot.
I don't, I don't think he has a conflict, because he works for the district, not Mr. Gad. And Mr. Tonello, I assume, is not getting any gain or loss from this application personally, right?
Correct. Correct.
Nor is the school district getting any gain or loss from this application, as far as I know.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman, if you're ready?
Yes.
Jeremy Couch, 6624 Wisteria Loop. I'm not opposed to development, or development in the urban service area, but I feel that the conditions that the staff has agreed to are completely inadequate for what they want to do. First of all, the traffic studying accurately predicts the eastbound right turns on 41 at Wisteria. It does not take in Arden Preserve into consideration. And so what's going to happen is, we're talking about Wisteria Loop, so a lot of the traffic goes to the south. The applicant needs to include the south leg of Wisteria Loop in their substandard improvement. The applicant also states that they're going to perform substandard improvements on Bexley Road. However, they have not demonstrated that the right-of-way exists. The graphic that Ms. Johnson pulled up shows the Clark parcel, which is not going to access on Wisteria. They're going to access on Causeway to the northwest. There remains a piece of land that the applicant does not control and does not have evidence of, that they're capable of performing the substandard improvement to get to their access. So, when this right-of-way is going to be dedicated in the future for their improvement, how can the staff and the county go ahead and approve the zoning without proof that access exists to get to the site? I'm not saying it won't be in there in the future, it's just not there today. The applicant sent out a mailing to widen the road, to let the neighbors know what they were going to do. They're showing a widening, they're not showing that the existing structure of the road needs to be rebuilt.
Talking about Wisteria now?
Yeah, Wisteria and Bexley. It's just a little chip-top asphalt surface. And, you know, what's going to happen is, they're going to widen this road, and they're going to code it. And then my neighbors and I are going to get a big fat P-VAS assessment, and we're going to have to pay for their development. So they need to include that in their approval. Is that one minute left? The notice is awful, I went out there, the sign's on the ground, it's on the far west side. I mean, they're probably out of order for that. The other thing too is, the substandard road improvement exceeds more than a quarter mile, and the applicant hasn't demonstrated that they can actually do this and still meet state drainage requirements, considering they're so far into the neighborhood. I mean, someday this is going to be developed, it's just really premature. And if they want to do it, they need to pay for all the infrastructure required. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Before we hear the next speaker, can I ask, we have transportation staff on WebEx?
We do, we have several folks on WebEx. Who would you like to, we may have to promote a few people.
Is Essen on?
Essen is on, can you please promote him?
So, I guess I'll ask Essen, Condition 15 says that they're going to improve, they have to improve Bexley Road from the project driveway to Wisteria Loop, and Wisteria Loop from Bexley Road eastward to US Highway 41. Is, was the assumption that they would be building the realigned version that goes through the Clark MPUD? Or was the assumption that they would be building, improving the existing alignment?
I believe the, this is Essen Kaleo with current planning. The assumption was that they will be improving the existing road as it is right now.
So not the realigned version? So not the realigned version that goes through Clark MPUD?
Correct.
Okay. I may have more questions later, but that was my immediate question. We can, you can proceed.
Okay. Are any, are any questions for the previous speaker?
I, I mean, I, I guess it's just a general question. I mean, if, if they cannot perform and meet the conditions of approval, what happens?
They would never get their first record plat. The, so Condition 16 says that prior to the first plat, they have to construct or bond all the improvements. So they'd have to either construct them prior to the first plat or post a bond for the cost of all the improvements.
So if the right-of-way, if they cannot acquire the right-of-way, or if they don't have right to the right-of-way, then they would have to bond or, they have to bond the improvements?
They'd have to bond the cost of acquiring the right-of-way, too, if they don't have enough right-of-way. That would have to be included in their, their bond amount. Be a pretty big bond if they don't have the right-of-way.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? I just had one question. On your map up there, Bexley Road, did it dead-end at the, or terminate at that particular area? If you could put that map back up there, yeah. You just notice coming in, I guess that would be from the...
Bexley Road.
West going east, does that terminate?
On the east side, it terminates at Wisteria, but it's like a Y intersection.
So it doesn't...
Some people go north on Wisteria Loop, but they also go south to Tower. When I go to my property, I come up south from Wisteria because it's the fastest way to get there versus going around the 41-54 interchange. If you look at that map, the long-term plan is for Tower to be the major road that ties into Bud Bexley. So the bulk of this traffic is gonna be going south on Wisteria in the future. But that road is, is not included in the condition. That portion needs to be included, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Good afternoon. I have something I want to enter into the record, so...
Yeah, just to give your name and address again, Ray, so we know who we're getting...
Ray Gad, 6504 Wisteria Loop.
Do I hear a motion to...
I'll move to receiving file.
Second. Motion in second. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye. What I'm entering into the record is a, a, a planning document that addresses specifically some of the concerns that I have and the neighbors have. But I'm not gonna read that document to you. It is intentionally brief so that you can take a quick glance at it, and it'll make some of the points that I'm not gonna make here today. My biggest concern is that when, when the Hagman MPUD came in, which is down the street, it was on that map. I don't know what you're looking at, but it's on Wisteria. We didn't like that when the...
We see the map, I'm sorry.
We, we didn't like that when, when Arden Preserve came in with the Hagman MPUD, but it made a little bit more sense because you turn off of 41, 200 feet down the road. You turn into Arden Preserve. When you leave Arden Preserve, you go down Wisteria, hit 41, it's right turn only, and you're out of there. Now, what we have is a situation where this particular applicant is gonna leapfrog from the Hagman development through our neighborhoods, which are all three, four, five-acre lots, has a rural nature to it, a pastureland nature to it. I have five acres on Lake Wisteria. Mr. Couch, who was just up here, has acreage there. Chris Naco has acreage there, as well as many other people. And so cars are gonna come through what looks like a rural neighborhood, a lane, down to this applicant's property. It's the first issue I have. Second issue I have is when we were working with the Hagman MPUD, we all showed up here, and we met with the planning department, and the planning department at that time, and we were speaking specifically to Ali Atef, agreed that for future planning purposes, because Bexley is gonna come over that railroad track someday onto Bexley Road. So Bexley Development's gonna come over that railroad track. We're gonna have no success changing that access because the railroads aren't really excited about giving us access over their railroad. And so the planning department realigned Wisteria Loop to make it a one-way shot. You would come over the railroad tracks, down Bexley, onto Wisteria, and out to 41. And it, I mean, no one guaranteed us anything, but the, the planning department at that time said that makes sense. Because now it dead-ends into a curve on Wisteria, and you can go right out to Tower or go straight to Highway 41. Someday, loads of traffic are gonna come down that road. And so all I'm asking you to do is add a condition that says that they have to negotiate, work with future developers, or whatever it takes, to make that vision road a reality, because that's effective planning. You will be able to move traffic at that point. Let me point out that D.R. Horton has submitted a plan where they're willing to give up that right-of-way so that that vision road can be built, and they're gonna have no access on Wisteria. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Chris Naco, like Mr. Gad, I'm here as a private citizen, 7842 Landa Lakes Boulevard. I live in the general facility. I appreciate Ray. I have security purposes, so. But my family are very big proponents of the Second Amendment. Just wanna put that out there, too. You know, I, I go along with the fact that, you know, we know the Angeline will be developed. And I don't think anybody's speaking here because we're anti-growth. We're actually, you know, for developing. We want the community of Pasco within Atlanta Lakes to grow, but to grow smartly. And the fact, when you see where the Angeline's coming in, you know, it's gonna be affecting from the south. You'll have numerous communities be affected from the south, but Sunlake's gonna be coming through, which will be a big one. Sunlake's also gonna go north. To the east, going will be Ridge Road. But there's also a lot, some communities, like this one on the map, that will be affected. And as we start developing, we start looking at how we're going to plan out our Angeline and everything else that comes with it, it should be looking at what type of roads. And that was part of the vision process, having the vision roads. And so one of the things that, you know, we're asking for is that start on the vision projects first. Start those vision roads, because if we don't have those vision roads in place, all we're gonna do is destroy the communities that are already there. And it's not just those that are on Wisteria. As you know, you heard, it, it's gonna affect numerous other areas there because people start realizing, if I wanna go out on 41 and Wisteria, and it starts getting backed up because, you know, the Arden Preserve is there, everybody's gonna start looking for different ways. I think we need to, you know, at least going forward right now on this project, let's make sure the vision road is in there first. As we start building out Angeline, let's start seeing how it's gonna affect everything else because we don't want to destroy the communities that are already in place. We want property values to maintain high in Pasco County. We want people to keep coming here. But if people start coming here and they realize there's just people driving on country roads, and they're backed up 50, 60 cars deep to get out and make a right-hand turn, we're gonna be in trouble. And it's going, all it's gonna do is back up into the Angeline, it's gonna back up into the Moffett Land. It's gonna keep backing everything up. So that's why, you know, starting from the beginning, if we could just start with that vision road and go back to it. I'm okay with growth, as long as it's done right. And if we don't have that vision road in place, if it's not done properly, all it's gonna do is start congesting everything up going back into the Angeline. I appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anybody have questions?
So, can I ask, no, not you, I'm sorry. I just wanna have a question for staff. Do we have a graphic that shows the vision road and how it compares to the existing Bexley and Wisteria? Because we keep hearing about the vision road, but I'm not sure we've seen a graphic that shows its alignment. I guess the applicant maybe does, but I, I'm asking, does staff have it, too, or? Anybody, can anybody produce a graphic that shows the vision road? How about that?
That's it there. So where's the vision road then?
Denise is getting it.
Okay, so I guess I'll just, maybe I need Ray to come back up. But when you were talking about the vision road, are you talking about the portion that basically bypasses the T-intersection of Wisteria and Bexley, the part that goes through the Clark MPUD? Is that what you're talking about when you say build the vision road?
Yeah, when they realigned the, the road, Wisteria Loop, they added a vision road to the north of Wisteria Loop. And what I like to point out about that vision road is it still comes through our neighborhood. But what it accomplishes is it essentially makes Bexley a continuous road so that people coming from the applicant's property, people coming from the Bexley property, or the future Angeline property would hit Bexley and have a continuous route without a stop sign right to 41 where they would make a right turn. Because as it stands now, they come to the curve in Wisteria and they can go right to Tower or out to Wisteria Loop. And when you think about the amount of traffic that's gonna come through there trying to access 41, that problem would be alleviated if we just had a condition that said that vision road has to be built. I don't care whether the applicant builds it, D.R. Horton builds it, Bexley builds it. And, you know, as an indicator here that we're not being entirely self-serving, we want to protect our property, but the vision road's right across the street from my property. What I'm concerned about is just this continuous line of traffic that's sitting out there in front of our property. And I don't think the current plan addresses that issue. And I know that D.R. Horton has offered up the right-of-way for that vision road, even though they have no intentions of accessing Wisteria Loop.
So, so Mr. Gad, I didn't want to give you lots more time, I just had a simple question. I just wanna make sure I'm clear. You're asking the applicant to build basically that, the triangular bypass piece of the vision road, not the entire vision road network. You're asking them to build the piece that connects Bexley, the bypasses the T-intersection?
Correct.
Not the, because you talked about the railroad tracks and everything else. You're not...
Yeah, no, I got it.
Your request is the, the, the triangle, the piece of the triangle?
That's right.
Okay, that was, that's my, that was my question.
My concern is, in the future, Bexley's gonna come over the railroad tracks and they're gonna come to that T.
Okay. You answered my question. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question about it? Everybody have an understanding of the...
I just, I have a question on the, what's the right-of-way of that roadway? How many lanes would that be?
That's a staff question. I don't know if the right-of-way is for four lanes or two.
Two.
Two. Mr. Gad's telling, applicant and Mr. Gad are both saying two, so.
Okay. Anybody else would like to speak? Are you speaking in opposition? Give you your name and address, please.
Absolutely. Matthew McLean, 20114 Bexley Road. I'm the neighbor, just to the east. We own three and a half acres. We bought two years ago. I'm from Pasco, Landa Lakes High School, right? Just, just, just north, walking distance now. I love Pasco. I love what the community represents, and I love its rural nature. And my concern is this will destroy that rural nature. Everything around it's agriculture, large lots, and now you're trying to throw... It's inconsistent. They're saying 108 homes on the agenda, 107 homes in the MPUD master plan, and 111 single-family lots in the conditions of approval, so it's inconsistent. So I don't know how many. And additionally, the 50.15 acres isn't buildable. 32% of that land is wetlands. So you're gonna cram 100-plus homes on 34 acres in an area where there's three, five, 10-acre plots of land? It just doesn't make any sense. So that's my concern. I'd also like to just address that we are all on well, and with this many homes and, you know, unfortunately, fertilizers and everything that's gonna be draining into our property, our, our water quality will be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
We have a person on WebEx.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Ken Osteen, 6351 Wisteria Loop. I am the 16 acres due east of the runner property.
Have you been sworn, excuse me, have you been sworn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I have the same concerns as the rest of my neighbors. The, uh, the planning is inconsistent. The traffic, the roads cannot handle what's on them now. We have a, you have a pothole crew that comes around once a month to fill the potholes on, on Wisteria Loop. And you, even if, even if you build the new, your new neighborhood and improve from Bexley out to 41, you're, you're gonna, you're gonna kill the rest of the road. We're gonna have, you're gonna put all those houses at above floodplain elevations by building code, and we're gonna get wetter than we already are, which we're already seeing the effects of from your, the Arden Preserve. We've been here for almost five years, and it's the wettest we've been, just because the water has nowhere to go. I also, my other concern would be, let me check my notes. Why, why can't we keep the current zoning? And we would be happy with 19 homes in there. Put them on three or four-acre lots, five-acre lots, whatever. But why do, why do you need to, to, to put a, put a bunch of postage stamp lots in there? Anyways, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Denise?
That's all we have on WebEx.
Okay. Shelley, I think we're ready.
Mr. Chair, I got one comment as the applicant comes up that I think is important to address. Mr. Couch made a, made a comment that the applicant doesn't control the access to, to the sub, the substandard road improvements. I think it'd be important for them to demonstrate to us that they actually have that access.
Okay.
Thank you. Could you put that, Denise, exhibit up? I think that exhibit will help, too, so we'll go through it and address everybody's concerns. And Mike Razor, I'll do a little bit of background that's gonna address some of the stuff, and then Mike will get up and address some of the concerns that were raised about the traffic study. So if you see right now, this is us. We are the runner, if I can get this thing to work, we're the little purple dot there, the runner MPUD. We are 50-plus some acres, where it's a rez six is the land use. And we're coming in, we're the small guy on the, the block right now at 108 units. The Arden MPUD that y'all have been hearing about quite a bit is over here, the green one. That's 129 units, I believe, single-family. The Clark MPUD, which is north of us, someone had asked some question, or had some, raised some questions about big lots and things. That particular MPUD is actually, it's over 300 acres. I believe it's about 410 lots or units, and that is actually gonna be 40s. That's got a proposal for some 40s and then some villa and some townhomes. So there's some heavier density going in on the Clark MPUD. As you can see...
Clear the...
Sure.
The Clark MPUD is not approved, right?
The Clark MPUD is in process. Yes, it is not approved yet.
The ones you mentioned, the one that's approved is the one in green?
Correct. My understanding is that the, the Arden is approved for 129. And then, of course, down at the bottom is Bexley North, which everyone's pretty familiar with that in terms of, it's got some heavy density. Sunlake Boulevard, that's what you guys were looking at. Now, the extension is this. This is the actual extension, the purple. I don't know why this is not working, but you can see when you get to the Clark MPUD in our exhibit, there's a little yellow jog, and that is the new realignment for Wisteria Lane. So what the realignment is, even though the existing Wisteria Lane is a little south of that and comes up around Arden Court, or goes by Arden Court, obviously, because I don't know if anyone, I don't know that it's been mentioned, but all of the substandard road improvements for, in front of Arden Court have been done already. So part of the Wisteria Loop, the existing alignment has already been improved for Arden Court. So we would be doing an improvement from our development all the way out the existing alignment of Wisteria Loop out to US 41. And then, you know, you have that northern jog someday, that will happen. My understanding is that the Clark MPUD has preserved the right-of-way. They've never approached us about, you know, doing some kind of a joint type of thing of doing the work on that versus doing what we need to do, which is the existing alignment of Wisteria Loop. But my understanding is that they, they are not proposing to do any, to actually do any construction on that corridor that is on their property. They control it. We don't control it, obviously. So, I mean, from our perspective, we're doing everything that we're required to do, that all the developments do. I mean, when you have a road that's substandard, we bring it up to standard, and that's what my client has agreed to do in terms of the existing alignment of Wisteria Loop, which is the access. Obviously, we're, we're, we're pretty tight in terms of access on the south side, so. But I do have Mike Razor here, and he can answer some of the other questions. Thank you.
Is that a, in that yellow line? Is that a, in that yellow line, that's a two-lane road?
Um, it's 80-foot of right-of-way, I think, is what the, it's ultimately going to be the Bexley extension on out to 41, I think, as Mr. Gad had mentioned, and, um, it's 80-foot of right-of-way, I believe.
Can I ask Shelley a question before Mr. Razor gets up?
Sure.
So hypothetically, if the Clark MPUD gave you the right-of-way today, would you all build that realigned segment in lieu of improving existing Wisteria?
Yes, they will build one or the other. Yes, they will build one or the other, but not both. So, but we don't want to be held up, obviously, so we want to be in a position to continue forward, just like any other development, and if we have to improve Wisteria Loop, it's existing alignment out to 41, then that's, we'll finish doing that. Like I said, it's partially improved. If somehow, you know, there's, the timing works out where we can build the actual realigned portion, the portion that jogs north, which I know, you know, makes the neighbors happy, um, you know, that would be something we would be open to doing as well. And I'll let Mike answer the traffic questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Razor, Razor Transportation Consulting, 19046 Bruce Beatance Boulevard, Tampa, have been sworn. Registered professional engineer with a specialization in traffic, prepared the traffic study for this project. Mr. Couch had indicated that the traffic study was inadequate. The traffic study was done pursuant to the Land Development Code's requirements, consistent with the county-approved methodology. The traffic study was performed on the existing roadway network as prescribed by the Land Development Code, not the Vision Road network. Just a couple of specific points, um, there was a mention about, uh, a lot of traffic, a subjective number, that would be heading east on, uh, Bexley towards Wisteria. Our traffic heading in that direction during the AM peak hour would be 63 vehicles per hour pursuant to the traffic setting and ITE estimates, uh, that's one per minute. In the afternoon, 41, which is one vehicle every one and a half minutes. So, um, again, subjective when you say, uh, a ton or a lot or significant amount of traffic. In regard to Arden Preserve, um, the traffic study, again, was done pursuant to county methodology, where we use growth rates rather than specific, uh, development quantities for Arden Preserve. However, based on some hand calculations I did just now, um, that right turn onto US 41, even including the growth that we had already included in the traffic study, plus all of Arden Preserve units, we would still be at a volume-to-capacity ratio of .35. .21 was, was the number in our study, which is 21% of the available capacity without Arden Preserve-specific units. Arden Preserve would add 41 additional right turns, more or less, um, which would bring that volume-to-capacity ratio to .35, which would still be a level surface C operating condition. Um, and in regard to the percent split of vehicles that would turn left on Wisteria versus turning right to Wisteria to Tower and then back to 41, um, our percentage split followed existing traffic patterns, which put about 90% to the north, 10% to the south. And it's presumably due to the fact that it's much quicker route to US 41 to the north, uh, .625 miles versus, uh, 1.46 miles to the south, uh, very circuitous route, 2.3 times longer to get to US 41, taking that route. Of course, I'll be here for any questions, thank you.
Before you move away, are there any questions, uh, concerning what he has proposed or said? Anything from up here? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I do have one question. Uh, there was a mention made of, uh, some type of, uh, requirement, if, if an improvement exceeds more than a quarter of a mile, what, can you tell me what that referred to? I think the mention was, I, go ahead.
Uh, we're scratching our heads here as to the, the basis for that condition, so maybe the, uh, opposition folks, Mr. Couch, can come up and clarify that for you.
Okay, that's such a harsh word, opposition, you know? Jeremy, do you have an explanation for me?
Jeremy Couch, Tampa Civil, oops, excuse me, Jeremy Couch, 6624 Wisteria Loop. Yeah, so there's a state exemption, which exempts, uh, minor widening a quarter mile. So you don't have to account for drainage and retention and treatment if your widening is a quarter mile or less.
And that's, you're saying that's what this is?
This is greater than a quarter mile to get to their front door, but they don't control any land in this area to do retention in.
Basically saying they have insufficient land to provide all the drainage for their improvements, because they're going to have to provide drainage when it's longer than a quarter mile. I think that's what he's saying.
They're committing to doing these improvements that can't be done, and then they're going to have this zoning entitlement that they can't do, and they're going to be back here asking to cut corners. That's my concern. I just want them to do what they're supposed to do. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Can I, I guess, I'm going to ask a related question, and I realize the Clark MPUD is not approved, but I don't know which plantar's handling the Clark MPUD, could somebody remind me? Tammy? Um, I guess, well, I guess maybe Essen knows that. For the right-of-way for, that we're requesting from the Clark property for the Vision Road, are they providing all the necessary drainage, floodplain mitigation, wetland mitigation for that road at two, or just the right-of-way? Does anybody know?
I, I'm not 100% certain. Uh, I think we have Will Boone here, maybe he can, uh, comment on the?
Mr. Couch is saying yes. He's shaking his head yes, Mr. Gad's shaking his head yes. I just don't have those, I don't have those conditions memorized, sorry. I don't know how they know. Maybe they've been studying the Clark MPUD, I don't know. All right, since staff can't answer my question, Mr. Gad, can you come up and?
You won't be paid for this, Mr. Gad.
Do I have to say everything again? Ray Gad, 6504 Wisteria Loop. Um, I can't definitively tell you what DR Horton, uh, is or isn't offering, because currently their plan is, uh, in, but I did speak with Clark Hobby, uh, Hobby, who is the attorney for DR Horton, who indicated to me that they will give up the land for all the right-of-way and for any necessary drainage that's needed as a result of that road going through. That's just a conversation I had with him yesterday. So it is speculative, but, um, they're currently in the process of doing the planning.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question for Jeremy?
I do have firsthand knowledge. I'm actually, Jeremy Couch, I'm on the development team for the Clark MPUD, and across the street on the west side of Wisteria, there's eight acres. They're dedicating, their MPUD dedicates both the right-of-way and two pond sites.
Okay, is there any floodplain mitigation or wetland mitigation required for that segment?
There's going to be all, sir, but there is land available for that improvement.
So any required drainage, wetland, or floodplain mitigation, the Clark MPUD is providing?
It's provided within the Clark MPUD for that Vision Road.
So why are you concerned that it won't be done?
What if the Clark MPUD is denied? Commissioner, I, I say that without saying it in a disrespectful way, so.
You won't be the first.
We're going to approve zoning based on some future action.
Well, no, I, I understand.
I'm just asking.
Yes, sir, I didn't mean that, Mr. Commissioner.
I understand the timing issue, but I guess my question is, if it were approved, you previously said there was inadequate land to provide all that wetland, floodplain mitigation and drainage.
For the conditions that are proposed now, which are substandard road improvement on Wisteria.
If it was the realigned version?
That's not in the condition, though.
I understand, but if it were the realigned version, then there would be enough drainage, wetland mitigation, floodplain mitigation areas to build the road?
Yes.
Okay, that answers my question.
All right. Okay, Shelley, does your team have any comment, further comment about this?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, um, I know that my understanding of the conversations we've had with staff, um, with traffic, you know, staff and our traffic engineers, that we have what we need to go either way. So we can either do the substandard road improvements to the existing alignment out to 41, so I'm not really sure where that misinformation has come out, come from, but we can also do the, um, if, if, if it comes to a matter of timing and it works, and they're giving all the right-of-way and all the drainage that we need in terms of that right-of-way on the Clark property, you know, we can build that versus doing the other alignment. We just can't do both, and we obviously have to have the ability to do it on the other property if in fact that's the case, so. And don't want to be held up by it, but we can go either way.
I realize you don't want to be held up by it.
Right.
You may be held up by it if that's the case.
What is the timing of the Clark MPUD? Do we, do we know?
Well, that is a good question. Does anybody know the answer to that? I think it's fairly imminent, because I, I know it came to me for review once, so it's.
There's drafts already put together of conditions, but I don't have a, an actual.
Public hearing day?
Here, schedule, correct.
Well, I assume that Mr. Couch knows, because if he's the engineer for the project, he must know when it's supposed to go to public hearing. Pardon me?
He said 10 years from now.
What'd he say?
He said 10 years from now, which doesn't make sense to me. I think he's kidding.
I can, I.
I can only speculate, but Mr. Cosby told me that they were two or three months off.
Okay, well, quit speculating.
So another, I mean, if we want to do an alternative, and if the timing were, I don't, what, the main thing is, is, I mean, we and staff, we can, I'm, I'm not sure where the misinformation has come, that we can't do the substandard road improvements that we need to do on the existing alignment out to 41, we can, and that's all the traffic and the experts, and I'm sure they'll get up and reiterate that if they need to, but if in fact it becomes an option that we can do the alternative, and that's what everybody would rather us do, um, and it doesn't hold us up, then, you know, we're open to that. Um, you know, we're trying to be good neighbors, we're not trying to bully our way through everything, we're trying to make it work for everyone, but we only control so much of it, at this point, so. And we have the access, I mean, we can, we can improve Wisteria and the existing alignment, so.
Shelley, just for clarification, I guess, going back to the conditions of approval on that Condition 15 that's in the, in the, um, approval, approval. I think, I think what it says is, I'm trying to get there, but it says that the applicant shall improve these substandard roads to county standards. I guess first item of clarification, that is just more than an overlay, correct?
Yes. Yeah, it'll have to actually be designed, yeah, correct. We are going to have to, it's going to be a million-dollar improvement when we do the rest of the Wisteria.
And then, as far as bringing it to standard, does that mean making it full? What, what all is included in the two-lane, I mean, in this, in the, bringing it up to standard requirement? Is it a full two-lane road? Is it a minimum pavement width?
I can let Mike.
Somebody just clarify that for the record?
Yeah, I can let them get into it. I think it's two-lane with shoulders.
If you're going to have a conversation, it needs to be up here. We need your name and address, please.
Paul Skidmore, Florida Land Design and Permitting, 3030 Starkey Boulevard, Trinity. Uh, we have looked at, uh, the right-of-ways for Wisteria and Bexley, and the majority of it is a platted right-of-way. There is a small portion that runs through the, uh, Clark property that is a maintained right-of-way, and we've had staff provide us with documentations that there's a maintained right-of-way through there. We are proposing to widen that to a 22-foot-wide pavement section. Right now, it's only about 18 feet wide, and we're going to be putting five-foot unpaved shoulders on each side, and installing a water main, a forest main, and a reclaim main, also down through there to serve our property and probably any other future proper, projects in that, in this area. So, and we're also looking to do, uh, some roadside swells to collect water.
Can you believe that you have enough right-of-way, now for the realigned, the existing, there's enough right-of-way to put in drainage, any drainage you need?
Uh, there, we would be real tight in the section that goes through the Clark property, because right now it's only a 40-foot maintained right-of-way. So if we widen the road to 22 feet with five-foot shoulders on each side, that's, uh, 32 feet, so you only have four feet on each side to the maintained right-of-way line. So that would be, it's, we can probably make something work as far as catching the water with inlets and routing them to the roadside swells where the right-of-way is adequate width.
Is right-of-way width not part of the substandard road consideration? And that's just probably a question for staff more than anything.
Well, there's a minimum width you need to build, there is a width, but it's a pavement width, I believe.
Okay.
Right.
Because it's their job to figure out how to fit that pavement in the, in whatever right-of-way we have.
And the 22-foot-wide pavement width is obviously adequate for the amount of traffic that's going to be put on that road.
That is correct, that's the, exactly what Hagman had to do for their improvements along Wisteria.
Mr. Chairman, Brad Tiffin, Planning and Development. I did get confirmation, uh, the Clark MPUD is tentatively scheduled for planning commission on November 4th and December 7th for me.
Okay, great. All right. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Um, any other questions from up here, from the desk?
I have a question of staff. I just, can you have that on the Pasco map or the Vision Roads? And can you zoom out a little bit on that?
Because what I, I guess my question is, we have the Bexley property, Bexley North, we have Angeline, which is north of Bexley North, and we have Ridge Road to get to 41, we have Bexley Road to get to 41, and we have Tower to get to 41. And I know Bexley North has about 15,000 units, and I know, I don't know, sure about Angeline, but I would assume about the same. So I'm just, I'm thinking there's three roads and there's about 30,000 homes, so I think we need to get it right when we do this to make sure that the roads are in place and do the planning. So if any of that was incorrect, just let me know, but I think those numbers are pretty on there.
Well, is Amir on the, online or no?
Um, we have Essen and we have Nima on.
Okay, well, maybe then one, one of them can answer, but I think they modeled all these roadways when they did the latest modeling for the, the Vision roadway network, and they determined the number of lanes that would be needed for Bexley Road, Tower Road, Ridge Road, et cetera. And when they do that modeling, they assume all the growth that's in Lin Angeline and Bexley and elsewhere. Maybe one of them can correct me if I'm wrong, but if they, for example, if they thought...
Maybe that is.
Go ahead.
That is correct, maybe.
So for example, if they thought there was insufficient roadway network out there, they would have made with, Bexley Road be four lanes instead of two.
Right.
Um, so I suspect that they do have determined that if this Vision roadway network is constructed, it'll provide adequate capacity for the area.
Okay.
Sounds like Essen agrees with me.
I think what you're indicating is that we need to make sure that Vision roadway is constructed.
Yeah, and if, I mean, there's no sense in doing it one time and then say, well, this is, we should have done this, you know, done change, and you got to change it again. So if we're going to do that Bexley Road, do it right the first time.
Yeah.
Or Wisteria, or Bexley, whatever, you know, whatever road that is. I'm looking at the map, it's got both names.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment. So I think you, basically, this is all comes down to a timing issue. I mean, there's also a potential compatibility issue, but that's up to you all to decide whether you think it's compatible, but in terms of the road, it's a timing issue because the Clark MPUD, Mr. Couch has corrected, there's no guarantee it gets approved, and if it's not approved, we won't have that, all the right-of-way that they mentioned to build the realigned roadway. So the only way that's guaranteed to occur is if this project waited until the Clark MPUD were approved. I understand they want to do it as an alternative, but in theory, if the Clark MPUD were denied, or they refused to provide that right-of-way, then they, they would have the right, this applicant would have the right to improve the existing Wisteria and Bexley, they wouldn't have to build the realigned road, so.
Right.
It's a timing issue, but, you know, that's up to the planning commission, how do you want to decide?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, I think that's a good summary of the, of our, of our predicament, and I think, uh, that's my, that's my reservation.
I think that's a question to the applicant, if they'd be willing to continue until, that understanding from Mr. Tiffin that there is a date specific.
Um, okay, so are you representing the applicant?
I am the applicant, yes.
Okay, well, you can't represent him.
I am the applicant. Mike Dady with KB Homes, I have been sworn in, 4105 Crescent Park, Riverview, Florida.
Okay.
Um, you know, what I heard today is really a greater concern about 20,000 homes that have already been approved, the Bexley DRI, the Angeline DRI, these have development orders. Those are trips that have been blessed for a long time. The Bexley Road was... The Bexley Road Wisteria situation is something that we can help be part of the solution. So I would beg to give us the opportunity for the alternative and a recommendation of approval. If the Clark applicant puts forth this, we would be willing to participate in a proportionate share manner. So give us a chance to be part of the solution. This problem exists whether we are here or not. Thank you.
Well, we want you to be part of the solution, but we also don't want you to be part of the problem or further problem.
You've already spoken, thanks.
So, you know, it's a pleasure at the board, you know, what do you want to do from this point? But, you know, I, I personally think that we need to make sure, and I think it was well, well stated, that this, when we do this, we do it right, we have the proper things in place. We can't let an artificial date define how we handle these neighborhoods. I think traffic flow here is extremely important. And, you know, I'm, I'm just one person, but I'm just, I think when we look at this whole picture and summarize what, where we've come from and where we're going, you know, we, we know we've all made mistakes in the past. We don't want to continue to make other mistakes just because we've made mistakes previously, so. We want to do what we can to help developers come in here and do great developments. We want to make sure that it impacts, that the negative impacts are as least as possible. So that's, that's my opinion. And I certainly, I think this is, unless anybody has any further questions of staff or applicants or anybody else, feel free to call them up if you would like to. Otherwise, I'd like to hear a vote, a motion from somebody here on the, on the board.
Well, I'm not gonna make a motion. I'm just gonna make a comment, if I may. I eventually see Landa Lakes Boulevard on the east side. The Loop Roads, Bexley Road, all the way over to the west. I'm afraid what could happen there is that's gonna be a connector road between those two roads, those two major roads, 54 and Landa Lakes Boulevard. Probably not within my lifetime, but within lifetime of some of you. And that's my concern, and I think the residents out there and that, that own that property, on those large lots, do have a valid point, but so does the developer. And I wish that the county had been able to come forward with a, a solution to this problem that's gonna be down the road. I hate to see us go ahead and approve this road in the present situation, present, present plan. And down the road, and I don't mean down the road, timed down the road will create a problem for those that are in the Bexley area, those that are in the neighborhood that Mr. Gadd talked about. That's my dilemma. So I, I'm not sure which way I would go on this particular situation. I wish there was a, I wish there was a solid answer on that one, but I don't have a crystal ball, so. That's my comment.
I'll just say that certainly being respectful to the applicant's desires and their, their timing. Again, we've all made the comment that we need to get the planning right on this, and this is a, this is a particularly difficult area that we're dealing with here. And again, I don't know if the applicant would have consideration to, to see what goes on with Clark MPUD now that we have a date specific that Mr. Tippins provided us, you know, which is only a couple months out. As a, well, to the end of this year, we'll have a good understanding of where that goes and whether, you know, there would be the opportunity for doing the alternative or whether they do the substandard road improvement. So I, I think that I agree that we need to get the planning right through this area.
So what you're asking is if they're willing to continue?
If they would agree to a continuance, yeah, until, until, and being, being, understanding of, of your, your timing consideration.
Thank you for the good suggestion. Mike Dady again for the record. We've been working on this for a year and a half with staff. You know, we brought up this vision road 100 times, saying, we want to be part of it. If there's a prop share agreement with Clark, let us join in and we'll be part of the solution. We met with the neighborhood twice. We've met with individuals. We've tried to address this, but we don't own the Clark property. We can't control it, but we're willing to step up. So no, we're not gonna take a continuance. We're, worked with staff for a year, and now we'd like our, our chance to move forward.
Understood.
Can you fill in any blanks, sir?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to suggest too, I mean, we can, I mean, if we can, I, I mean, we don't want to take a continuous. We want to move forward to the board. So, I mean, if we could get a recommendation of approval with some added condition with regards to the, the issue that's arisen with the Clark property and the fact that the, that segment of that particular improvement corridor is on their property, but move on to board, and then we can have conversations with Clark Hobby and the Clark MPUD and see maybe if we can't figure something out between all of us before we get to the board meeting. But, I mean, we've been in process for so long at this point with the pandemic and everything, and not to anybody's fault. It's just, it's the way things are right now, but, so we'd like to move forward.
We, we could agree at the board to a future developers' agreement. So if this right of way becomes available, we'll agree to an either or, can commit to entering into that agreement. It's a small project of 108 units. It's doing everything it can. We shouldn't be penalized for county issues that involve thousands and thousands of lots. We follow the rules and regulations as they exist today, and we can make that road a better road. We can improve it substantially to the conditions that it are today. Give us a chance for an alternative recommendation and move us forward with an approval, and we promise to do the right thing.
From, from a compatibility standpoint, if the Clark MPUD was not even being considered, would, would this zoning change be compatible to the surrounding area? I think that question's probably for staff. I don't know how this was looked at. I don't know the order that everything was submitted. But if I look at everything around there, it's all AC, ER, AR. If this was a standalone MPUD of this size, what, what is the compatibility matrix?
Jessica Cole with the Planning Department, Planning Development Department. When this project was looked at, the future land use is rez six, and it is in compliance with that. The traffic study identified the possible build out of 111 units. The applicant, when looking at the conceptual design, identified that that was probably not a doable number, which is why we're seeing the 108 proposed with this MPUD. The areas surrounding the proposed site have a lot of density, but through the MPUD rezonings. And that's why it was identified that this is in compliance with the future land use and the surrounding area. However, it is noted that the surrounding lots adjacent to the site are quite large. They still carry the same future land use, which is a little bit of a conflict with this particular project. But it wasn't necessarily in compliance with the regional or the, the bigger picture of the, the area considering the future land use. And the other MPUDs approved in the area had similar or higher densities.
Yeah, well, I mean, in the future land use there now are rez three?
Six.
Six now?
I have a question. Did he, I don't know if this is still true, but when I was in the planning department, there was, you look at the zoning and the land use, and it's the most restrict, the least restrictive or the most restrictive?
Yes, exactly. So in this case, the most restrictive is what it's currently zoned today, which is AC and AR1.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought, because you don't automatically get rez three if you have rez three. It's the, the most restrictive of the two.
That's why we're here today, yeah. So we're, they're, they're asking for an MPUD in an area that's, has a rez six comprehensive plan, future land use.
Okay.
And one, one thing to confirm, one of the folks who gave public testimony, I'm sorry, sorry, I don't remember your name, but brought up the fact that there's an inconsistency between the conditions of approval with the number of units and the, and the, is that correct, or is, are the conditions as proposed correct?
Again, Jessica Cole. I believe what the reference was is the timing and phasing application.
No, it was actually the number of units.
Yeah, it's referenced in the conditions of approval, but the timing and phasing application proposes the maximum amount of trips, and that was proposing 111 units. However, that's why the request is less, because during design, they know they can't get that many units on the site.
Okay.
The approval is not for 111, however. It's for the 108.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, just make, let me just make one comment. So first of all, I understand the applicant's not in agreement with the continuance, but the planning commission can continue it if they want to. You don't necessarily, you can do it over the applicant's objection. But my main comment is if you have concerns about density or compatibility, that's not gonna be solved by a continuance. The continuance is only gonna solve the, potentially solve the realignment issue through the Clark property. It's not gonna solve density compatibility issue. So if you have concerns about density and compatibility, you could make a motion right now to deal with that issue. I'm only pointing out that it only makes sense to continue it if you think you're okay with the density and compatibility because you'd be continuing it to resolve the roadway alignment issue.
Right.
Am I making sense?
Yes, absolutely.
Can I ask this? Could we approve it based, and have stipulation that the, the road alignment be worked out with those who are concerned?
Well, so you, you, you in theory could improve it with a requirement that they build the realigned road. I understand that they don't control the right of way, but you could approve it with the condition that that's the only alignment, that, that's the only road they build. Now, and it would be their job to figure out how to acquire that right of way between, before they get their first, they'd have to figure out a way to do it.
Yeah.
So one solution to the timing dilemma would be what, maybe what you're suggesting, which is, don't do as an alternative, just say, you shall build the realigned road. And then they'll have to figure out how to get the right of way between now and whenever they plan.
See, that's something I could live with.
Excuse me, sir. You cannot keep coming up here every five minutes. You know, I gave you an opportunity to respond, and now we're talking, talking it through.
That, that makes sense. It's kind of like, you know, we're meeting them halfway. We're meeting the residents who are, live in that area and have concern about that road. At the present time, I can see down the road, like I said, beyond my lifetime, how the, these two major roads are gonna be connected with that passage through that. That's gonna be, but anyway, that's a different point. I could live with that, where we make a recommendation or a requirement that do they, the developer, realign, you said it more eloquent than I did.
Develop the realigned, right.
Make the realignment conducive to fit the needs of the community.
We don't, I don't know how to describe it from this graphic, but it's the, the requirement would be to build the realigned version of Wisteria that goes through the Clark MPUD. And that otherwise, the, the rest of the substandard road improvements would follow the existing alignment of Wisteria and, and Bexley.
Is that what you're?
Yeah, that's what I. But you'd have to do it to make it clear that that would be through right of way to be acquired by the developer.
Yeah, is that a motion?
That would be my motion, yes.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there for any further discussion on the motion?
I mean, my only concern with that, obviously, is, is tying them too directly to, and they're basically held hostage to the Clark MPUD. I mean, it, Peter, is it, I mean, if a, if that condition is revised to include an either or alternative, either they have to do that or they have to bring the current alignment up to, you know, bring it up to standard. Does that do the same thing?
I believe so. What I'm trying to, to accomplish here, and I'm not doing a very good job at it, I'm trying to try to meet their needs, the developers' needs, and at the same time to ensure that the realignment doesn't impact the community that's already in place. We've heard from them, they're, they're, they're what I would call estate type of homes out there. So they want to maintain a certain, I think that's the problem, is the road itself. They don't want a road that's not gonna be compatible to their area. And that's what I see. That's what I was trying to accomplish through, through this process.
I, I would, I would echo what Jamie said. I, I don't, I think we hold them hostage to the, the potential right of way that they can maybe never get access to. That's, that's part of my conversation of whether they would let the, the hearing process in the Clark MPUD play out to see how that ends before we make a decision on this. Because from a compatibility perspective, I'm okay with that. I'm just, I'm, I'm stuck on the, the transportation issue.
Yeah, and you get, I mean, to me, you continue it until they're both held at the same time. They're both here, they're both talking, they can agree and disagree, and work it out in a public hearing. In two months, it's not that big a deal.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I personally think that, from what I've heard today, I, I think they're, they're gonna run into some problems even meeting the conditions the way they're written. But if they're willing to accept those, I, I guess that's a whole nother story, so. I, I mean, I agree. I, I think that's a big, the big issue here is timing. I think if this was after the Clark MPUD were held at the same time, I don't think we're even having this discussion.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Let's vote on that motion and see if it passes or doesn't pass. Doesn't pass, we'll get another motion, different motion. So we have a motion on the floor, and I think, can you restate it?
Can we restate it? Yeah, please.
Peter.
David.
I'll try. I believe his motion was, and tell, Peter, tell me if I'm wrong, to approve the project with a added condition that they build the realigned version of Wisteria Loop on right of way to be acquired by the developer from the Clark MPUD.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of that motion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay, so that motion fails.
Can I just confirm on the nays, just to record, you nay, Chris Poole?
Yes.
James Jordan?
Nay.
And Richard Smellum?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, did you vote?
Yeah, I voted nay.
Okay.
And Chairman Gray, voting nay? Thank you.
Two, four, okay.
Okay, so, I think, I mean, in my opinion, I think a, a resolution to this problem for, at least for me, to get my vote, and you all kind of have your own vote, but is that we're gonna have to, I'm gonna ask for a, another motion. What I would like to see is a motion to continue. Because I, I have reservations about compatibility, but I can get by the, by that, but I can't get by the, the road issue. That's, that's my problem, so.
Brad, can you?
I'm up with any motion. I'm just making that suggestion.
Can you confirm the dates on the Clark MPUD again, the hearings?
Yeah, they are tentative dates. They are not official dates. But it is November 4th and December 7th. And another potential option would be to include a, a time certain for them to be allowed to use the alternative, that they need to obtain the right of way prior to a particular date that can be after that hearing, but also a reasonable distance so that they're not bound and held hostage by the Clark MPUD like there was some suggestion. You could set a date that, you know, if it's not resolved, as at this point, they're allowed to do the substandard road modifications they proposed instead.
I think that's the, effectively the either or alternative.
Yeah, but with a trigger that they have to at least wait out the, a reasonable amount of time to obtain that right of way.
I think that's hard to quantify. I think we, I think we either wait to find out or we don't. But, yeah, I, I can't make a motion, so somebody's gotta make one.
And if it's the November 4th meeting, I guess if, if we're saying we want to make a motion to continue, do we have to pick a date? This is my first question.
Yes, otherwise they'd have to re-advertise.
Okay, and if we pick a date, November 4th, is that in Dade City? I'm assuming since the Clark MPD is being held in Dade City, this could be held in Dade City too?
Yeah, why is this one in Newport Ritchie? Oh, because it's on this side of 41?
Yep.
So why wouldn't Clark be on the same?
That I can't speak to. I'm not sure why that, that choice was made, but it's planning commission on the 4th, BCC on the 7th, and both of those. and both of those would be Dade City. Actually, right, that's right. There is only one BCC meeting in November.
So, since we have primarily three people in opposition, you all, could I, I'll ask Mr. Gadd. Does the opposition care what side of the county this is heard on?
I don't know about the opposition, I don't.
Yeah, that's a...
Mr. Couch, do you care what side of the county this is heard on?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. So, it sounds like you can continue it to whatever side of the county you want to continue it on to.
Okay.
So, you're...
I'll make a motion to approve, or to continue this to the November 4th Planning Commission meeting in Newport Ritchie.
Dade City.
Dade City.
Dade City, sorry.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion to continue, and we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like, sign?
Aye. Or no?
Motion carries.
This is probably, I probably should have made this before, but I guess Shelley and your team, if you guys, my recommendation would be to try to have the discussion with the Clark MPUD folks before that Planning Commission meeting, so everybody's all on the same page.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
That's the best thing you've said all day. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going.